All right, we're gonna call the meeting in order, roll call.
Councilmember Murch?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Black?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Derringer?
Here.
Mayor Piper?
Here.
All right, pledge allegiance?
Pat.
Do it as in lawyer Pat? Fire it up.
Oh wow, okay.
From your heart, you did it with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, there's always a reason.
There you go, there you go.
All right, here, any, we have no proclamations. Approval of the agenda?
Mayor Piper, before you do the approval...
You can go for it.
Okay. ...of the agenda, staff would like to pull item thirteen C this evening, and we will return with a reconstituted item on May twelve.
That's super exciting. Could someone, oh, someone approve the agenda? Wait, wait, is, I didn't look again. Is Robert up front?
Yes.
He's first.
I make the vote to approve. We're pulling the thirty second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we're gonna go with, someone wanna approve the, the blue folder?
Still moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Is there any public comments on non-agenda items?
Nope, there you go.
Nope.
Close that part?
Consent calendar? Oh, did you wanna come up?
It's just about that house and...
It's, it's coming up, it's in court enforcement.
Oh, we're gonna talk about it? Okay, we're good, we'll bring it up. Okay, consent calendar?
Move the calendar.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So excited, down to one piece of paper. Oh, I need to go away. All right, new business, receive and file the city of Rolling Hills audited annual financial report for the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. No, nope, nope.
Good evening, mayor and council members. So, I am here to present to you, nine months, ten months later, after the fiscal year ended, the financial report, the results of the audit from last fiscal year that ended June thirty, twenty twenty-four. I think as somebody once said, then, you know, this is something we have to go through, and it's an important part of, you know, the closing of our books. But hopefully you won't hear too much new information, because we've been giving you regular updates from prior years in the current year. But there are some things that are, I think, important things to come out of this, some important nuggets, if you will, of information regarding the city. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, because I think this is sort of older news, but I think, again, there are some things you probably should, should or wanna hear. So, this is the annual comprehensive financial report for last fiscal year, and the recommendation ultimately will be for you to receive and file this. You know, we have to go through an annual audit, it's required not only by state law, but probably by cities municipal code. You know, we provide to you, we present to you the quarterly reports, they're really more about budget and actual, on the revenue expenditure side. This is, you know, this is a financial report that goes through all the Gatsby requirements in terms of accounting, and year-end closing, and accruals, and the like. So it's a different kinda purpose, and different kinda focus. Ultimately, one of the key points of this financial report is that it does tell you whether the city is in good financial condition or not. A budget report would not do that for you. And in the old days, prior to nineteen, I, two thousand and five, financial statements weren't designed or intended to tell you whether you, the city was in good financial health or not, and whether you were improving or deteriorating. So one of the benefits of this report, which is gonna look a little bit different in terms of its format than you're used to, but it's designed to tell you whether the city is doing okay from a financial condition perspective. I won't bother with getting, these are the five parts that are, make up the act for the annual comprehensive financial report, the M-DNA. This is probably the most important part of the, of the document, because it's a narrative, in layman's terms, of sort of, this tells a story of the, of what transpired during that fiscal year. It includes these entity-wide financial statements that are presented on a whole different basis, and that's, their intention is, again, to tell you whether you are in good financial condition or not. The rest of it is really kinda things you've been used to looking at with the general fund, and all the individual funds, and the presentations we've provided in the past. So at a very high level, this is, shows you the city's assets, and liabilities, and net position. And I think all of you intuitively know, when you think about your own finances, you know, when you think about, how do you measure one's financial health? You look at all the assets, and everything you own, and everything you have, and you subtract all the liabilities. So if you have a house, what's the value of that house, minus the mortgage on that? That's your net position. And this combines all funds, not just the general fund, but all the restricted funds to this, in this column, except for what's in the second column, which is just the refuse fund. So we'll talk about that in a moment. But everything else, the government activities column, is everything. That's why the numbers seem bigger, because they represent not just the general fund. But if you kind of turn your attention to this section, this, again, is a measure of your financial position and your health. So the city, in the third number, or the second and third numbers there, the restricted and unrestricted represent total available funds, if you will. And they're all positive numbers, which is important. And I will tell you that if you look at most cities across the state of California, particularly older cities that have a police department and a fire department, these numbers are negative, because of that pension liability that they have to now put in, like we do, we have our pension liability and OPEB liabilities. They have to put on the financial statements, and it's turned a lot of cities upside down. Fortunately, we are pretty well-funded with our pension and OPEB, so our numbers are in a positive, so it's a good, we're in a good position. The business activity against refuse fund, they, you know, we basically spend what we get, you know, and so there's really very little surplus. So at the end of this past year, we only had about twenty-five thousand dollars in cash, which is consistent with money coming in to pay our contract for refuse services, and those two numbers generally match. On the revenue expenditure side, you could see, again, government activities and business activities, I've highlighted the bottom line, or sort of highlighted the important number here. That's either an increase or a decrease to your financial condition. So in this past year, your financial condition improved. And in the government activities column, it went up by almost one point three million dollars. Now, I will tell you, that's because of how it's accounted for, and on accrual basis, it's, you know, it doesn't represent an increase to cash by one point two million dollars, but it certainly represents an increase in your financial position from the prior year. So the city is going in the right direction in that regard, citywide. Now we're down to the individual funds. This is the, the general fund's revenues. If you look at the budget and actual, they're almost identical in total. And that wasn't, you know, I'm not gonna take any credit for that, that's just the way things laid out, you know, that's the luck of the draw. But individually, you could see that our property taxes were under our budget, they came in lower than we expected. The year before, we grew eight percent. We projected a five percent growth, and they were down about, they grew only about four percent. Building and other permit revenues, you may recall that the prior year, we were in the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, we had a really good year, and we conservatively budgeted six hundred thousand dollars in our building and other permit revenues, and we came in at five thirty-seven, actually higher than I thought we were gonna achieve. This year, our budget was only four fifty because of that. But we did better than I thought, but not quite at budget. Our planning fees, all the discretionary stuff, we came in below budget on that. In our interest on investments, I don't get too excited about that, I mean, we didn't do that well, the hundred and twenty-one thousand. A lot of that, it came from the fact that, because of the movement of interest rates, we can recognize gains or losses on these things. And so we had a substantial gain on just the value of our securities. Doesn't matter, because they mature at par, we don't ever realize those gains, but it's still, at least going in the positive direction. On the expenditure side, you could see that, if you take out the last row, which is the amount that we have budgeted for capital projects, everything else, we're really kind of in line with budget, except for city administration, where we had a lot of vacancies, and we realized substantial savings in, in terms of what we, our budget was. So overall, when you include the amount we budgeted for capital, which is substantial, we ended up sort of, to the good, on the, on the, from budget to actual, one point seven million dollars, most of that because of the fact that we don't spend all our money right away on our capital, it's spent over time, even though we budgeted for the full amount. This is a better representation of kind of how we did in the general fund. Our revenues did about forty-two thousand, forty-two thousand dollars better than budget. Our expenditures did about three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars better than budget. So a net operating surplus, and so forth, on the budget side, savings of three ninety-eight. But the real results is four hundred thousand dollars to the good. Our actual revenues minus our actual expenditures, we ended up with a surplus in real dollars of four hundred thousand dollars. Most of that went to spend, were spent on capital, which left us a small increase to our bottom line reserves of ten thousand. But that's positive, because remember, we always anticipate that we're gonna spend, or pay for our capital out of reserves. So in this past year, we were able to take revenues effectively, and use that to pay for our capital, rather than taking out of reserves. So that's, that's a good result, in my opinion. From an audit perspective, you know, the, the opinion that they, the issue on the financial statements, it's like it should be, it's a clean opinion, so it's, we refer to that as being unmodified, it just means that it's fairly presented. They also issue a report on internal controls. They don't issue an opinion, which is not what they do, unless you pay them a lot of money to do so. But they do have to evaluate our internal controls, to determine if there are any material weaknesses. And they do that, not just because that's part of their auditing standards, but because they have to rely on our internal controls in order to determine how much audit work they do. And if you think about the last few years, our auditors have charged us very little money, and, and we got dotted contract on this agenda, but they've charged us very little money, because they don't have to spend a lot of time on the audit, because they have a, they place a high reliance on our internal control structure, and our processes and procedures, that reduce substantially how much, what they call substantive test work they have to do. But again, they had, they found no material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies in our systems of internal control, and they say that in one of their letters. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One, when you said, when we were talking about some of the capital projects, we were able to use income revenues, as opposed to having to go to the general fund?
Reserves.
Or through the reserves? We're talking about revenues that we got based on the grants, right?
No, this is just general fund. We, you know, ultimately, we spent less than we thought on the expenditures, that's primarily where we got that surplus. But if you compare our actual revenues for actual expenses, we ended up with a surplus of four hundred thousand dollars, as shown here. Our adopted budget was gonna require the use of, of reserves for our capital program, but we didn't have to spend any of our reserves for our capital. We came out of all of the savings, and the, and the better-than-expected results in our, on overall revenues and expenditures. And it's mostly on the expenditure side, and most of you, you look at the variance there, we had expected two point seven million dollars, but we only spent two point three six. So that three fifty-six variance is what caused us to have a surplus that didn't necessitate us having to pay for our capital program out of reserves.
Okay, so this had nothing to do with...
Nope, nope, no.
The two undergrounding projects?
Yeah, but that's a good, that's a good comment or observation. We are, you know, we're kinda covering these capital projects and costs that are ultimately gonna be reimbursed by FEMA and OES. So we're having to advance those, and that's part of what we get, we transfer out of the general fund to cover that. We will be seeing, you know, roughly seventy-five percent of that come back to the general fund to reimburse us for those costs. So we'll eventually see some of that money even come back from, that we spent for those capital projects that are FEMA-funded.
So I, to tag on to that question, I don't know if this is the right time to be asking this, but are the FEMA reimbursements that we're expecting subject to being eliminated? I mean, the, I don't want to vote for an audit discussion, but that would have a serious impact on our, going forward on our budget.
Yeah, I mean, Chris can help as well, but I doubt that.
I can answer that question. We actually, staff has been meeting with CALOES and FEMA. Currently, the grants that the city has applied for is not on the list of being terminated.
Nothing started out in the list.
And, but I will say that, in May, we are going to have Robin from CALOES join us at a city council meeting, and she'll kinda talk a little bit about the grant programs, and where they are in the process. And it's gonna include some of these discussions as well.
So, and to piggyback on Leah's question about the surplus, I was really, I was really pleased to see that, because I've been worried for years about replenishing our reserve, we're spending it, you know, or allocating it at least, agreeing to spend it. And since I've been on council, almost ten years now, that number's just come down. And I, I wondered, where are we, where are we gonna come up with replacement funds for what we're spending? I mean, we spend that down to a certain point, I mean, we have a, we have a limit that we can spend down to, and once we hit that, we can't do any more capital projects. So where is the money gonna come from? Because we don't, we don't really have much of a ability to increase our revenue, you know, and we even overestimated our property tax revenue, which is the most significant part of it. And if we don't have that, and the building, building permits, you know, I mean, where's this, where's the, where's the money to clean up the city hall gonna come from?
Right. And, so, not to, you know, put cold water in this, but this doesn't avoid, this doesn't replenish our reserves, it just avoids having to spend it when we...
I get that, but that's, that's still positive.
Yeah, no, it's very positive, for sure. Yeah, 'cause I think we're down to about a million, and some change, in terms of overall reserves above our policy requirements for emergencies. So, you know, and for appropriate reasons, and good reasons, we've been spending that down. It was once a much bigger number.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a, you sort of implied at the beginning of the, your conversation about this audit report, that this audit report is different, because it says that Rolling Hills is doing okay from a financial standpoint. Isn't that something that's sort of in all of the audit reports, that they're...
Yeah, no, it's, it's different relative to what I present to you on a quarterly basis. You know, during the year, which shows budget and actual expenses, and budget and actual revenues. This is a completely different focus. My reports during the year are just to say, are we, are we in line with our budget expectations or not? This is really, how are we doing financially, are we in good financial condition, and all of that? So it's a much more comprehensive and important report than, than just the budget-to-actual reports that I provide you. So it's different in that regard.
Okay, but not different from other audit reports?
No, not at all, not at all, it's, it's all standardized reports.
Good. And the one thing, just for me, is, if, when, there's gonna at some point be a murmuring out there on how all these other cities are gonna deal with their negatives, with their pension funds, and all this sort of stuff. And we put our money in a different bucket, so that way, we don't give it to them, but we still put it in another bucket. We should, when they start talking about it, 'cause at some point, it's not gonna happen in the next three and a half years, but depending on what happens in three and a half years from now, might affect that, I just wanna make sure we're thinking through how we can position ourselves, that we don't get left out of free money, if they're gonna start giving free money to the state to bear, to try to get out of all the, the debt that state has. Just because we're being smart about it, I just don't want them to be like, oh, you don't have a negative, so you can't. So I don't, I don't know what the answer to that is, I don't know, there's no, nothing to say right there. But when you hear them starting to talk about, like, how that might work, we might wanna position ourselves the fiscal year before, or two years ahead of it, to readjust how it looks, to make sure we're telling the right message if they're gonna hand out free money.
Who's bad?
The federal government, where you send all your tax dollars to. Well, we'll see what happens in three and a half years from now. If Mr. Goodhair gets in, we could get free money. All right, I'm opening a public comment, is there a public comment?
I've never heard anyone call me.
Something else in the house, we can't say that out loud. We're gonna close the public comment. If someone would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, perfect. Then the next one, approve a professional service agreement with Vasquez and Company.
So, you may recall that, two years ago, based largely on the direction of our council, all of you, the council, we went through an RFP process to solicit proposals from audit firms, and primarily because we were like, at the time, we were like at year seven with our existing audit firm, Lancel Longheart, or LSL. And there was a desire on the part of the council to, just out of good practice, best practice, to change auditors. Two years ago, we went through an exercise, and we got no responses. And so we extended and amended our agreement with our existing auditors, LSL, for one more year. And we went through the same exercise the second year, last year, and still yielded no results. And so this year, I took a different approach, and rather than do an RFP, I, I still had that RFP document from last year, I updated it, I just started making phone calls. I called the, the firms who would typically respond, and who are, you know, there are usually about five, four or five firms out there that do this kinda work for cities our size. And I just reached out and said, you know, one, why haven't you bid in the past? And two, would you be interested in submitting a proposal? And they, most, for the most part, they've been scared away by the fact that our existing auditors were allowed to bid, and they just felt like they're charging so little, there's no way we can compete with that, so they didn't even bother submitting a bid. But I reminded them that this time, we're not gonna be, that we're definitely gonna go with a different audit firm, submit your proposal, and, you know, we'll have to just evaluate them. Two firms did submit a proposal, Page, Price Page and Company, and Vasquez and Company. And both were reasonably close, and I requested a proposal for three years with an option to two for two. Both are very qualified firms, both do a lot of this work, and been around for a long time. So it really, for me, it came down to price. And Vasquez and Company, their, their three-year proposal was about eleven thousand dollars less than that of Price Page and Company. And so, based on that, we, as staff and I, are recommending that we go with Vasquez, and we've included in your folder, within your packet, a professional services agreement that we would want to have, have you approve, so we can have executed. And that will, we'll start that audit on normal timeframe, but it'll be changing from LSL to presumably Vasquez and Associates for the next three years. Can you answer any questions?
Any questions? Okay, please.
What, when you spoke with, with them, did you explain to them, or was there any conversation about why the rates used to be so low, because ours was easy, and things like that? Or was that not an issue? And what, what were we, what did we pay for the...
Yeah, they, yeah, LSL did raise theirs from the, from the year before, so they said, we'll, we'll extend it one more year, but they bumped it up to the low thirties. The first year for Vasquez and Company would be forty-four. So it didn't go up too much, but, you know, I, I think that LSL, just because it had us a long time, and, you know, they, they don't, you know, they, when, when a new firm comes in, they spend a lot of time in the first year to, to document how we do things. They have to learn about us and our operations. So, you know, that's why you look for three-year contracts, because they would lose money in the first year. So, you know, they're, they've bid a three-year contract, and they figure on a three-year basis, given the first year effort, we'll be okay. But, yeah, you know, I, they, they don't, I don't have to tell them, they ask, okay, can you tell me, can you give me all your reports from the prior years, letters of management letters, reports on internal controls? They ask, how many audit adjustments did we have? Tell us about your organization, and all that. And they based their proposal on that information. I, I mean, I think they, most of the firms know me, so I think that they, at least they have confidence that, you know, there are qualified people that are running the operation, and that they can have confidence in that. They're still gonna have to go through the process, but, I mean, you know, they know that the, that the overall internal control environment, as they describe it, is gonna be favorable for them, versus walking into a big disastrous, you know, organization.
Well, you mentioned that they knew you, and, you know, so there's a mutual respect there, back and forth. You respect their firm, and they respect you. When I was looking at some of the cities that Vasquez represented, do you work for those? Do you do any work for those, or do you know them from someplace else?
No, I've just known them, you know, we...
From the business.
'Cause I used to be an auditor myself, and then just because I was a client. So yeah, no, I don't do any work for any of the firms that currently are auditing.
But, and just to restate what you just said there is, we're paying a hundred and forty thousand dollars over three years, and currently, right now, we're paying...
Maybe a hundred and twenty, or ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah, ninety thousand, so this is fifty thousand dollars more to switch auditing firms.
Yep.
Jeff, I have a question. So, I sit on the board of some nonprofits with budgets.
Ten times a city.
But it is, and I, I think that the audit, the audit firms are expensive with nonprofits, usually in the twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar range. Should you just expect that a municipal audit is gonna cost more than a nonprofit audit? I mean, I, I don't know how that works.
Yeah.
I know what I pay for my, you know, for my business auditing, but it's actually more complicated to see. There's multiple businesses, there's a lot of, you know, different ownership structures, and so it's, it's, it's more stuff, but especially for a city our size, it just seems like it's not that hard. Not that much time, I should say, not...
Yeah, I would say that the fact that there are multiple operations in a city typical, versus a, a nonprofit that typically has a single focus, and a single purpose, and one sort of business. We have the general fund, we have the refuse fund, we have all the restricted funds. Each of those have to be audited from a financial perspective. And then they also, under government audit standards, they have to do a fair amount of compliance work, so they wanna make sure that we are following certain rules that, you know, that the county may impose on us, because we get county money, or the state, because we get state money.
So I assume that the firms that audit municipalities is not, they don't also do nonprofits? I mean, is there a divide between them?
Yeah, they might, but I don't, that's not gonna be a, you know, these kinda firms, they specialize in cities and special districts. And if they're a bigger firm, they may get involved in the counties. But big counties are huge operations, and you typically have these large firms doing those. So the Vasquez and Company, and the Price Pages are typically looking at cities in population of, you know, a hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand people. Budget's as big as half a mil, you know, half a billion dollars, all the way down to ours. But I think forty-four thousand is representative of the fact that, that even though we're small, there's a minimum amount of work that has to be done, and you can't get around that. And that's just kinda the market price.
Have you already anticipated the increase in costs in our budget?
Yes, it's in our numbers, yeah.
You have any questions?
I know it's like best practices to change every few years. Isn't a law that we have to change every few years?
No, no.
One change?
It'd be grand.
I wouldn't...
Seriously?
Yeah, no, I know, it isn't a law, but it is...
But I, I will say that the, I believe it's the managing partner, or the person doing the audit must change. So the same person from the same firm cannot do it for certain years in a row.
Can you just verify the math, but I don't, you say a hundred, it's forty-four thousand, then again, it goes up to forty-seven thousand, right? Is that right? So...
Yeah, it said... Yours was a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is, which is about forty, just under forty-seven thousand dollars a year. And you're saying, we used to be at thirty grand, which is ninety...
And now wouldn't keep their fees at thirty thousand dollars, they're not gonna, you know, they were sort of, expect this to be the last year. If we were to ask them, give us the three-year proposal, it's not gonna be in the low thirties, it's gonna be probably closer to forty, that's my guess. At some point, they gotta, you know...
Especially after they see the other numbers.
Yeah, but...
So, and do you don't know the exact amount that we were, what did we spend last year for LSL?
Yeah, again, I don't know, but I think it was like thirty-three thousand, if I'm not mistaken, is what their proposal ultimately was for.
Do you have any reason why their charge would be at least ten thousand dollars less, or more than a ten thousand dollars less per year to do the same work?
Again, I think that LSL recognized that we were, you know, now that they've had us for years, that they're pretty, were straightforward audit, and I think that they were just keeping it low, just out of goodwill, I'm not sure. But, you know, the fact is, the last two years, we went through an RFP process, and nobody bid, because they felt like the fees were too low. And they would've all bid in the forty, and some were in the fifty thousand dollar range. So I think that, you know, low forties, mid forties, is a probably appropriate number. And again, I'm going back, based on the direction I received two years ago, that it's, that seven years, after seven years, it was time to change. We're nine years now with the same audit firm. You, you know, you really do wanna change, and we've changed partners within that timeframe, so it's not like we've had the same partner. So we've gone through those rotations already.
And do they flat-line bill us, or they, is it more the first year, and less and less?
No, they, it's the same, it's maximum per year. So forty-four thousand would be the max in the first year.
Okay, any, nope?
Well, it's a thirty-four percent jump, that's a pretty big jump.
I mean, one other question, do they have the depth in, is it LSL, right, that, that did our, our audit? That, are they gonna be able to continue to change up who does the audit?
Oh yeah, they're, they're, they're equal size to LSL.
Okay, so it's not like we tapped out after nine years, we don't have any new people that could do the audit that, to change the...
Yeah, I misunderstood your question. If you're asking, could we stay with LSL and just change partners? I guess theoretically, we could, and that was in the direction I heard. I guess theoretically we could, I mean, that was in the direction I heard, so I didn't, I didn't go there.
Yeah, I understand, I guess we didn't know how much it was going to be, that's another one too.
The realities are, the other people are going to bid more because they're going to no matter what anyways. Now, for sure, they're going to bid more. And at some point, even if it's, let's say that the delta's five grand a year or eight grand a year, at some point we have to be overly fiscal responsible by saying, we've got a whole brand new thing. And otherwise, if something does happen and we've been using the same people forever, it's going to make Pat, who doesn't work here anymore, look really bad. So that's where we're going to work, but I mean, that's, that's the problem. I don't think we're going to save a ton now from, once we've done what it is. So I think just the cold reality of it.
I guess the question would be whether or not we do, instead of a three-year, we do something for a year and then we rebid.
No, the problem is, the first year is the sixty-five thousand dollars worth of work and then it's easy from then on because they know, they have it all in their systems and all those sort of things.
Right.
The first year is-
I guess the question whether we do, we negotiate with them and say, you know, we'll do it for this amount, you know, if it's higher than what it was last year, but still less than this.
But I've been told multiple times, we're not going to negotiate over anything, so.
We can't negotiate?
No, you can, right. My answer, this is substantially different than the public works bidding of a, of a public works contract, so. I believe the bids are, sorry, the proposals are what they are. If the council's direction is go back and ask for a lower bid, that would be appropriate, i.e. not illegal, however, we have no reason to believe that the bidders would accept that.
We're just going to waste time and energy on our side and they're not going to make it lower.
I don't even think it wouldn't hurt to ask the outfit we're with if they do, you know.
No, so-
But we are getting a little bit of deliberations, it's public comment before.
Yeah, so hold on, we're coming right. I'm going to open a public comments, any public comment? I'm going to close the public comment? So, the question is, what Jim was bringing up is, so, when do we have to pick what we have here? When, when do we have to do this?
Our deadline to pick a new audit firm, when is that?
Yeah, I mean, so we're approaching the end of the fiscal year. There is no deadline, depending on when we want to complete our audit. We could theoretically spend another six months and try to see what we can do, but, you know, then you get fewer firms who are available because they're starting to get in the middle of their busy time and that's, I don't know.
Or richer hire and as they get-
Yeah.
Closer to the deadline.
Well, and I think the other realities are going to be is, the people we have right now aren't going to come back to the same number, they're going to come back at more, of some more. And then, if I'm these two other guys, I'm never quoting again.
We don't need another quote. We already got the-
Well, in two years or three years or four years.
Well, I mean, why not, our numbers are small enough. We get to return checks here that people see. You would know if someone was swiping a check here or there. I mean, they just would, there's not that many. So, I don't see why not ask the same firm what they would give as a bid. We've already got these two, if it takes another four, six weeks, so what? And then hire, if it's close, hire a new outfit. If it's not close, keep the same. I mean, if it's within five thousand or six thousand here, hire a new outfit. But if it's, you know, ten, fifteen thousand dollar friends, don't.
Can I ask how long you think if we did go back to LSL, to, how long do you think it might take them to give us an estimate for a new contract?
Yeah, within thirty days because they know our city, they know our systems. The difference, you know, right now the difference is about eleven thousand. I would venture to guess that they will bid somewhere close to forty thousand dollars. So that's kind of the, that's my assumption, it's going to be forty versus forty-four and that's going to be, that's if I had to sort of make an educated guess.
I would just think for our due diligence, that for thirty days, that we ask them to do it. I mean, B, I know this is something that's been more of a hot button for you wanting to change. The last several times we've, you know, remained with them, so I know that's something for you, but I don't think to put off for thirty days, if we think we can get a new bid from them in thirty days and then weigh whatever savings there are versus the recommendation that, we've had them for quite some time and just the appearance of it sometimes of having a different firm, even if the partners are changing, they're actually doing the audit. I don't see why we wouldn't ask.
Yeah, I wonder how long the proposals, what I don't know is how long their proposals are valid for, so they-
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, how long are the, these bids good for?
Typically, they don't keep them out there because, you know, you got to, they expect you to make a decision at some point.
Oh, that's a good point. You mean the other proposals that we have?
Looking for a expiration date.
Usually it's like in the cover letter maybe, where they say this proposal's valid for, it might be ninety days, I don't know.
Oh, okay. This proposal on Vasquez is a firm and irrevocable offer for the three fiscal years beginning this, but they don't say-
Yeah, how long are they for?
Beginning June thirty, twenty twenty-five, or ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five, but it doesn't say how long it's good for. I would assume that it's good for at least thirty days.
Well, yeah, but thirty days, but what's the date on the top of it?
It's April twenty-third. But I mean, we could put it over for one more. Do you think we could get it by next, in two weeks for another council meeting? Because LSL has done this before, they could turn something around?
I don't know, I can ask for sure.
I guess we could set it on the agenda and if we don't get it, decide at that point.
Hold on. If we don't know this is still good in two weeks-
It is.
Right?
It is, right? Yeah, it is.
Someone can make a motion on it.
Would you like me to make a motion that we approach LSL and see if they could give us an estimate?
I would second that.
And if it could be turned around in time for, should we be in this way?
Right, or, I mean, so, or basically, the, as I hear, is the motion to direct staff to continue this item, ask the, our current audit provider to provide a bid and then as timely as possible and then bring it back upon that, upon that bid, or if they say, no, we're not going to, then this will be back probably a year, next meeting.
I like that, what he said, please.
Yeah.
That would be the, that would be the motion.
Yeah, and I may not, you know, I may ask him, I don't know that they're going to want to submit a full proposal like you see here, but I may have a conversation with him and say, okay, give me a letter, just because you know the whole, I don't need the whole forty-page proposal, give me a letter that indicates for the next three years, what would your proposal be and see what they come back with. I just can't guarantee what that's going to be.
Thank you, there's a first and a second, let's roll call this just for fun. Councilmember Mersch?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Derringer?
Yes.
Mayor Piper?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't want to put anybody in a box. Just worried about you, Jim. Okay, we're skipping thirteen C. Hey, thanks, Robert. Sorry, sorry to make more work for you. All right, matters, oh, is there any matters from city council that's not on here? Nope. Okay, then matters from staff, fifteen A, ADA improvement projects remaining options.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This item is before you tonight at your direction from the previous meeting where we discussed the, this item. So, as you'll recall, I don't know why that sounded very Jersey coming out of me. They're somewhere.
Out of the Jersey, but you take the Jersey out of the boy.
So back on March twenty-fourth, we presented you, the council, with three different options. Options one, two, and three. Option two out of those three was to do another amendment with Pacific Architecture and Engineering to have them re-engineered the designs based on the feedback that we had received from the Rolling Hills Community Association Architectural Committee. Council voted to not pursue that option, to not enter into a new amendment. And then you said, hey, let's see what the tennis court ADA quotes come in at, understand kind of where we are in a fiscal sense and then bring this item back so we can discuss options one and three. So really, what staff is looking for tonight is some direction as to how should we proceed? And the options are, again, option one being that we thank the architectural committee for their, for their input, but we move forward with completing plan check at county building and safety. And then, once we do that, we can go out to bid and find out what the overall cost would be for this project. The other option is the same thing, except once plan check is done, we just hold our stamped plans here and then, over the course of time, staff with council direction can effectuate minor ADA-related changes internally within the building as the budget sees fit. You know, things that are most important, you know, entry to the doors or the counter height, things that would have the most direct impact on public-facing individuals and we can take that on a slow roll, you know, based on what your priorities are and what the budgets are at that time. So, this really is an opportunity for the council to re-engage in discussion on this and then just tell staff how you would like us to proceed.
Do you have a question? No.
I have a question. Do we have any estimate at this point from our consultant about how much he thinks this would be going out for, I mean, for the bids? I mean, obviously, we'd have to still test the market clearly, but does he have any estimates based on?
Pacific Architecture and Engineering has not presented any engineer's estimate, if you will. So, really, the only way for us to gain a true understanding of what the market bearing cost is right now would be to go out to bid and see what comes back.
And then, in terms of the status of the tennis court project, is there any updates on that? Because obviously that other money's going out for that, or?
So, at the last meeting, of which yourself and Councilmember Black were absent, the council voted to reject the bids that had come in, where staff is planning to go back out to bid this week. And then, I'm trying to think of the dates that I was just working with, the bid would close at the end of May, I want to say May twenty-seventh. So, staff would return sometime in June, most likely the second meeting in June, with the results of that tennis court third bid, assuming that we, we get responses.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open public comments, is there any public comment? Melissa, come on up.
Thank you. I just had a question, I was looking at the, listening at eleven thousand Ridge Road stop. I was looking at the document that was attached to this and I just had a question. I was at the last community association meeting and David McKinney said that the four hundred thousand they had budgeted was for the cabana section, whereas here in this document, it mentions that it's for the ADA. So I was confused and I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the council so that they could clarify that if necessary.
Staff's understanding from the community association, not directly from Mr. McKinney, but from the board's direction to their staff, is that they were willing to contribute up to four hundred thousand dollars and possibly more, but that would go back to further consideration by the board, once we had a fully realized bid and acceptance of that.
So it wasn't, it wasn't specified for ADA versus cabana?
Cabana, the, the cabana itself is a separate project after we get through the ADA, the footings for the cabana, there's a lot of groundwork, no pun intended, before the vertical of the cabana would be constituted. And that is a separate project that'll be taken, undertaken by the RHCA separately.
Okay, so I just thought there was some confusion and doubt and it's I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
So you know their public comment, we're going to close the public comment. So, I thought we had to do, we had to start from the road and work our way this way. Right?
That-
Bus stop, the hill, the whatever, that all has to happen, right?
Part of our previous conversations, when the California Joint Powers Authority or insurance providers had a consultant conduct an ADA study of the city and the city grounds, it incorporated components that needed to be accomplished prior to the facility itself and that is the accessibility to city hall. And it starts from coming up and parking in our parking lot. Because part of our city hall is in the city of Rolling Hills Estates, part of the work needed to be conducted and performed by the Rolling Hills Estates depart, uh, city. And they did, they did the, some components of it. We are trying to address whether or not we needed to have anything else coming up at the light fixture up. But the actual consultant work addressed the parking lot, the mobility between the city hall and the community association, ADA parking, leveling it so that way if someone is in a wheelchair, they're not going to slide backward because it's on a downward slope in some parts of the area. So, yes, we had to have addressed the parking situation once they enter our city hall. But the part from the light fixture, that part, we're trying to conduct some additional research to get us out of that if that's the case.
All that has to happen first, right?
They would like to have that done, because there's no point in building a new city hall when it could impact the way they come in and they park and they get out of their vehicles. There may be some slight adjustments.
I thought you said it's from the bus stop to the door.
Yes, that was staff's understanding, but it's not from the bus stop, it's actually when you come and up the hill to city hall. The bus stop incorporates ADA already from the neighboring agency that has done accessibility from the bus, exiting the bus and entering the bus.
So it's essentially from the street light to the building now?
Yeah, there's a travel, a passage of travel right around where the DG is and the, the trail. With someone were to, in a wheelchair, go up and to enter our parking lot, it's, it's very steep, so that needs to be repaired. And staff is looking at alternative options to address that particular area.
So, my take on this is, that has to happen first, then I'd rather not spend any-
Plus you-
Unless you-
If this, we're not going to bulldoze the building, and we should, but we're not going to bulldoze the building because it would cost us forty-two million dollars to build it under prevailing wage. So, we have to keep the building, whether we pick a fight with the HOA or not over the, where the door is or where that stuff is, at the rate we're going and how broke we're going to be, is going to be a million years from now. So, my, and I understand what Christian's saying, hey, we got to fix this, this thing's broken, we should fix this, we should know what we're doing. I still would rather not spend any more of Christian's time on this thing until we get past the tennis courts outside, how do we get from there to here? Talk to Rolling Hills Estates who has the same money problems we do on how to get up here, figure out what the parking lot, because the footprint is not going to change. So, why don't we do that and at the speed we're going, that's going to take, what, eight, nine, twelve years? Let's do that and then we can get to here. I think the fight with the HOA, which doesn't necessarily have to be a fight, is really about whether we move the glass out so the room gets a little bigger, which we, every two years, we need a bigger room. It'd be nice to have it, but they're right, it's, doesn't look like it's supposed to if we ran the thing flat across the front and where do we put the other bathroom and how much money that costs? So, that's my take on this, is let's solve the problem that has to go in the order we can do it, because we can only spend the money we have. And for me personally, I'd rather fix the tennis courts than start fixing this building, which is going to cost a gazillion dollars we don't have.
Can I ask a question? What are we waiting on as far as getting some more clarity on what needs to be done and how regarding the access issue? I mean, what is that dependent on?
So we already have, the report was presented before city council in twenty twenty, I believe, or twenty twenty-
Nineteen.
Twenty nineteen. It just hasn't come to fruition. When the proposals were submitted for architecture company- When the proposals were submitted for architecture company, which is PAC, they started focusing on the building first. So, what's gonna create a little bit of time for us to do is to determine what, we will have to put out information out there to see who can actually conduct that assessment for us and how to pay for it.
So, they didn't do any of that?
No, the consultant firm said, here is your ADA plan, you need to start from here and work your way up. The building should probably have been the last thing, but that's not the process in which it's conducted. So, when we met with them, they said, you should have focused on this part as we directed, and then, the consulting company that we worked, the JPIA, I don't have it in front of me, but, so we...
Okay, another consultant.
Another consultant, yeah, through the authority, through our insurance. So, staff is trying to see what monies we have available currently, that's through measure monies, to try to see what we can do to get some of the parking components accomplished first, so that way, when someone comes to City Hall, they have a place to park that's ADA-compliant and enter our building. So, it's gonna take us some time to get to that point, so we're working backwards at this point.
Okay. All right, well, and so, is there a process, and are you, do you need further direction, or is there something already in place to bring us to the point where we can have a proposal regarding plans to do the access? Because it sounds like we don't have any plans, right?
We don't have those proposals as of yet, we just have the study that was conducted and presented. Do you want to add to that?
I was just gonna say, the plans you have are specific to the building, they've been in plan check for almost a year, but we don't have plans, we have guidance from LA County as it goes to, from the path of travel from the door to the Equestrian Trail, that's about it. We don't have any plans from the entrance of the Equestrian Trail down to the traffic at the intersection.
But that is required. I mean, it's our, it's on our watch, it's not RHE that is responsible, or is that an issue, or is part of an issue?
It's part of the issue.
Okay.
And it's gonna require additional discussions.
But the reality is, my mind is, until we figure that out, we shouldn't be doing anything here, because when we figure out that, oh, we need to regrade the parking lot because of this reason and that reason, because the way the ramp comes up from here to there, and we need to move the door or the whatever for this, I'd rather have those pieces in place before we're making any sort of, because the time suck that we have been putting poor Christian through is ridiculous. I think we should just stop, figure out what the bigger picture is, and then, go from there.
Do we have an, I mean, that makes sense, do we have any information from JPIA or their consultant, that there will be definitely a need to regrade the area that's just adjacent to the...
We don't know.
We don't know.
It's gonna start down by trying to get a wheelchair from the traffic light to here, and the street is too steep, so it can't go up that way, so that's probably gonna have to go this way, along the easement in Rolling Hills Estates, and then, at some point, whether it's a little switchback and comes back, or it goes all the way to generator shed over here, and then, it comes across, and at that point, someone might say, they need to, people need to come in here, and the parking needs to be there, and the front door, we need to set, I mean, all sorts of things could happen at that point. So, we need to figure out what's gonna happen there first, if that has to happen too, because fixing this building and not fixing that solves zero problems.
And if I may, Mayor Protem, right now, through our, through LA County Building and Services inspection initially of where our ADA parking space is, we are just minorly out of compliance and need to address the asphalt and some of the uprooting that is being caused by one of the trees to get back into the 2% grade that is necessary from the space to the front door.
2%?
I believe that's what, it might...
Two?
It's like a curb, I think it's two and, two and a half.
So, do they, do they do that kind of work for us as our contractor, that they would be able to do it, or not?
Staff right now is exploring a way to use our Metro TDA 03 funds to effectuate that aspect, because it's adjacent to the Equestrian Trail.
And a bus stop?
What's that?
And a bus stop.
Correct, but, but again, we have not explored anything going further north to the street.
Well, we started out with sort of three options, and then...
These are none of them.
We're off the table.
Yeah, none of them, those are none of the options.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, what are we even considering at this point? There's just...
The ask is, do you want County to complete the plan check and stamp the plans as-is, and then, we just keep those on file here? Or, I mean, I don't know how long County would hold on to plans, or...
I guess the better question is, is how much money is that gonna cost us and how much time? Because they already have a set plans, right?
They're already in check, they're just waiting on...
So, if the answer is, they're gonna stamp them and hand them back to us, then I'd have no problem with that, then stamp them, then have them, we at least have approved plans. That doesn't mean we're doing any of those things, but if the sewer pipe or the septic pipe over here in this bathroom blows up, we at least have an idea of what we would be doing with the approved plans on the bathroom, versus whether we decide, to me, whether we decide to move the glass or not, because that plan doesn't have the glass out there, right?
The plans have the last direction of the Council, which was to move everything out to that flat edge, which is what the Architectural Committee was rejecting.
So, if they're willing to stamp the plans they have without us spending any more money on architects, right? In theory?
In theory, that would, if they were only waiting on the Architectural Committee's approval, then yes, that was the only holdup.
But are we able to just pick apart the part that we want, just do the bathroom and leave everything else?
Well, we did the air conditioning, right? I mean, things are gonna break, this building is old, it's, things are gonna break. My problem, I'm back to the same thing, is if we send out, whether we move the thing or we don't move the thing, how is this not gonna be a couple million dollars we don't have?
Well, I don't mind getting, approved plans will have something, may not be what we want, but I mean, what's the downside of getting the plans approved at this point?
Yeah, that's the thing, extra cost.
Hold on, if you guys don't mind, I make a motion, if it doesn't cost us any more money, then let's get the plans stamped and have them back.
Well, how about we make a cap, like, we're not, it's not gonna cost more than...
It's not spending any money on this.
Two hundred dollars, I mean, do we really want to hold it up for $1?
Okay.
What are some of the potential costs, Christian?
I'm sorry?
What would be some of the potential costs? In terms of, if the County says a plan check?
It could be just a permit fee, which, which sometimes we get waived by County.
How much can the city manager sign for without asking us?
Several thousand dollars.
I'm terrified about this number, what is it?
Several thousand dollars.
Well, since I bring everything to you. Let me pull it up.
I want to say it's around 20 or 25, no, but typically, it has to be budgeted, so she just can't spend $25,000 on whatever she wants, but if there's money in the budget for something, and it qualifies as those...
So, let me, I'm with, okay.
Not to exceed the city manager's sign authority and whatever's allocated.
Okay, so how about this, just so no one can see, I'm, I'm making a motion that we go get them stamped, and if it's less than two grand, we just do it worth a little fees and whatever. If it's gonna be more, just tell them to hang on a second and just bring it back to the next meeting with the least amount of paper possible that just says it's gonna be this much more. Because I just, we wasted so much money to get here, I just...
Yeah.
I still second.
Okay. All in favor?
But can I...
Yes, may, oh.
Take a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
On that, or maybe it would be a second issue to get us a plan? I mean, the JPIA people told us that we need to do these other things outside before we do anything.
Yep.
Do we want to see some type of, I'm not talking about necessarily the plans, but I'm not even sure what we're talking about at this point, about what needs to be done that they're talking about needs to be done before we do this?
I, I understand, I actually understand what you're saying, and...
Uh-oh.
And so, what I would say is, the building elevation's not moving, the street down there's not moving, and the curb's not moving, somebody has to figure out how to get from there to here. The problem is, the first big piece of it is in Rolling Hills Estates.
Okay, I read, I read...
So, I think, I think we have to give Karina some time, we have to give Karina some time, and I don't know if you're helping on this, but Karina some time to go strong-arm Rolling Hills Estates into helping us solve the first part. Once we know where that is, we can then figure out what we're doing, but I, again, so, all right, there's a first and a second, that we have a cap at two grand to get it approved, if it's more than that, you're just gonna bring back one piece of paper that says it's more than that. Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Look at us. Boy, that made, I made that as hard as possible.
Just sorry.
Okay, receive and file FIRE Code Enforcement Quarterly Report.
The term FIRE should have not been in that sentence, I just realized as you read it out loud, but this is receive and file the Code Enforcement Quarterly Report for the first quarter of 2025, January 1 through March 31st. Mayor Piper and members of the City Council, I will be presenting this item before you. As of January 1, the city had received 16 code enforcement cases that were mostly related to overgrown vegetation, dread, dead trees. Staff has reason to believe that a lot of this was based on the recent Palisades fires and the surrounding cities that were impacted by the fire. Since then, the city code enforcement, contract code enforcement officer has been able to close a handful of these items, however, six new cases still remain, of those six four involved overgrown vegetation and/or dead trees. Code enforcement is still continuing to manage the 12 open cases that date back to 2020. Of those cases, five involve issues of overgrown vegetation and of dead trees, others involved items such as code, sorry, construction and/or nuisance to the properties. It is important to note that some of these cases may not be listed, such as the one that we had received questions, such as the 79 East Field, I'm not sure if it was inadvertently left out, because it's listed under a different category, which is under City Attorney purview. Just a quick status update on the 79 East Field development, as reported at the last quarterly report, it is under receivership. The receivership is assigned to GS Strategies. The receiver himself has been working closely with the city staff, along with the Community Association, as it relates to the property. The most current updates is that they have, they've been researching landscape companies to maintain the property, specifically identifying invasive and/or trees or plants that are not native to the area and removing them. There has been an asbestos inspection, and they have found a less than 1% concentration in the foundation concrete, which means that they have to use special precautions when removing the concrete. Because this is not a hazmat situation, it must be handled and removed with care. The receiver is also looking at several different contractors and are working on proposals. They did identify that SCE has looked at the power lines just outside their property on the easements, and they have been conducting the tree trimming, so if you have been driving through Eastfield, you may have seen that work already begun. The City Attorney portion, they have a hearing set on May 29 to discuss this in depth. At that time, the Council, along with the receiver, will provide an update to the court on the current status. If the receiver is able to, at that time, they will be presenting any additional financing that they will be seeking court approval. This includes the financing, but also the rehabilitation plan to address the property itself. And in regards to this property item, this is all I have to report out. And that concludes my presentation for the code enforcement component. I do want to add that the second layer was not presented this evening, city staff is working with the Fire and Fuel Ad Hoc Committee, along with the Association, and we will present something back at the, at a future City Council meeting.
Questions?
I do, and this may be for the City Attorney, but who's gonna, if they're asking for additional, the receiver asking for additional financing, that's gonna come out of the property, correct?
Correct, Madam Mayor Protem.
Okay.
It would not come out of the city, yeah, no offense from the city.
And are we in first position, or is the mortgage in first position?
So, typically, the mortgages, I do believe that there is a process and procedure for which are, and once again, when you say us, you mean our fees up into this date of...
All expenses from the city?
Correct.
How do we get them back?
Correct, yes, I mean, those will be included. I do not believe that there is a way we can get ahead, but as you can imagine, that is typically fought very, very hard by the current mortgage holder. So, as of right now, we are not in first position, there is a chance that we can get there, however, it's not, it's not guaranteed.
But we're subordinate now.
Correct.
Are we the first subordinate, or the more down the line?
Yeah, that, that, I'm not entirely sure on the title report.
Do you know if there's property taxes owed on this?
They'll be first.
Has to be.
Right.
It should be first, so County's gonna get their money, then the mortgage guys, and then us, if there's only one mortgage.
State, county, mortgages.
And do we have any idea, in terms of value of the property?
They're gonna get hammered.
And, and what the extent mortgage is?
Off the top of my head, I, I don't know.
It kind of felt like they bought it at the highest point in time, otherwise, they would have done this completely differently. Okay, all right.
I make a motion, receive and file?
Open public comment, any public comment? We're gonna close the public comment?
Okay, I do want to ask just a quick question. We have, I know this has open cases from 2020, but the earliest is June 13th of 2023. We have quite a few unpermitted structures.
Yeah. I, I went back to 2020 just to see if I can capture any from 2020, but as you can see, the 2023s, I think, is the most current, that's why I ran into that period, just to see what I captured, but moving forward, I won't go that far back. And staff is working with code enforcement, the planning staff and code enforcement, to address these unpermitted structures that we've identified. Again, this is not proactive, it's based on phone calls that we've received, and we're hoping to address these in the next quarter.
Yeah, I mean, what is like a basement? You can't do that in secret, I mean, digging up extensive soil.
That's surprising, a basement.
I know, an unpermitted basement, I mean, that cannot be something that's...
Well, but it could also be on a hill and...
You can see it.
But, yeah, and... But the fact that they're still there, like, if you talk about an aggressive dog, either that's closed, or the dog's gone, or something, I don't think we should be showing something here, there's something wrong with us.
Yeah.
If we've got stuff hanging around, we've got ones that are these long, I think we should be presented with a chronology or something of what's going on, that's the purpose of seeing these things, so that we can keep things from falling through. I know that one of the things that's on here, and it's not an old one, it's, it's brand new, but just FYI, I believe that was, there was a resolution at the last Planning Commission on that one, on Eight Quail Ridge North, if I remember correctly, from the last Planning Commission meeting. But the unpermitted things that are, anything that's unpermitted, we should know what the status is on it.
Okay.
We should receive a report on that, along with, along with just the quarterly report.
Okay.
Okay, good?
Good. I make a motion, receive and file?
Second.
Now, we, yeah, now we go to the close session part.
Were you not talking about sirens?
No, they moved it, because...
That was taken off.
They took it off, they had to move it. They took it off, they had to move it.
The city council recessed into closed session earlier this evening. Pursuant to the five items listed on the city council agenda, the city council reconvened into open session at eight forty nine P M. And I it is my privilege and honor to have a report on item sixteen C by unanimous five zero vote. Vote. Nick Papa John has been appointed the city attorney for the city of Rolling Hills, and that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, and we are going to.